Thank you. Good evening, everyone. For the record, as always, Charlie Gallal, Public Schools Compliance Officer. Thank you for having me. Chairperson Dugan, members of the committee as a whole, of the whole subcommittee members, mayor, members of the administration. We have three policies for consideration tonight. They are the generative artificial intelligence policy, which is a proposed new policy. This is a very general and flexible starting point for AI. The second is the transportation policy, which exists in your manual under file number EE. This is a cleanup of a drafting error that came through the Mass Association of School Committees overhaul, plus one commonsense language addition to calibrate practices across the district for students with disabilities. And then finally, the student cellphone and electronic device policy. This is existing policy J I C J. What you'll see is a proposed slight tightening of the policy that exists now, plus some updating of language for the times. Before I get into AI, I just want to acknowledge and thank chairperson Dugan as a partner on all three of these, outside of these meetings and through the drafting process. We've done a lot over the last few years, and just wanted to acknowledge that now, as opposed to doing so through each policy.
Appreciate that.
But the work's being done, so thank you. All right. So we'll start with generative AI. So I'm going to give you first just a little bird's eye view of what's happening at the national and the state levels. At the national level, there's a real embrace for AI with the current administration. April 23rd, Advancing Artificial Intelligence for American Youth was an executive order out of the White House. It created a task force and directed the Secretary of Education to really incentivize AI through federal grants over the next few years. So that's what's happening at the federal level and coming down the pike pretty clearly. At the state level, we are at the start of a multi-year roadmap, as Desi is calling it. This came through an April 29th announcement that Desi would be creating a suite of resources over the next number of months to begin to help educators understand AI, to put forward model policies, to put forward trainings. They've started some pilots of PDs, but we're at the very starting point of all of that right now. And then at the local level, I just want to tell you the steps that have sort of got us here. The first thing that happened is that myself, Dr. Shannon Gardner, and Noel Bolio from Innovation and Grants attended a really great policy drafting workshop from the CES Centers for Emerging Education. That is an outfit out of central Massachusetts that has some pretty good trainings and workshops. I've attended several over the years. And what we first got to through that workshop opportunity was the philosophical. Are you looking to ban AI? Are you looking to do a free-for-all? Or are you looking to embrace but govern AI? And you'll see the approach that is before you tonight is that third embrace but govern. We also reviewed other districts near and far. There are not a ton of districts that have AI policies yet, but a couple that come to mind in Massachusetts, Uxbridge and Newton. We also looked at Chicago. We also looked at one out of Japan, actually. And the L T U was a great partner through this. Sheila O'Neil provided a lot of resources on AI, and the union has materials that we look to as well. There were meetings with executive leadership and with chairperson Dugan, and ultimately drafting and redrafting of a policy, which you'll see is an initial policy because this is a rapidly evolving technology. If I came here with something that was too specific, I would be back in a couple of weeks with something new. That's how fast things are moving. So this anticipates in the policy that school committee will revisit from time to time, but ultimately, it embraces AI through ethical and responsible usage. It provides authority to the superintendent to issue procedures in alignment with this policy, and I'm putting a pin in that. And throughout, there's a theme of shared responsibility and also data privacy. All right. My pin in administrative procedures, you'll see the policy is very general, so the procedures are going to be really important. So we did get a head start in this instance. On May 7th, we brought together a group. You can see on the screen the folks that were involved in the group, educators from various levels, leaders in the district and the L T U as well. I also want to note that Tulon Public Schools students, high school students, were part of it. They actually had opposing views on AI in general terms. It was, you know, they stole the show, I would say, certainly in the meeting, no disrespect to my colleagues. But we went over with them the draft policy and made a couple of small tweaks. We did some initial brainstorming about procedures if the policy passed. And that brings us to the policy itself, which you have before you, I believe, in separate form as a standalone document. Section one of the document is the purpose. That is generally to embrace but govern AI. Section two, we define what generative AI is. Section three, we get into shared responsibility. So the district is going to maintain a list of tools and applications that are authorized. The district is going to look at training and support. Staff are going to adhere to those policies. Staff are also going to be sure to use AI to supplement but not supplant their instruction. Staff and students alike are going to be sure to cite AI, that AI was used when appropriate. And then the fourth section is on data privacy. This is really the compliance piece. And the compliance piece is, of course, not sharing confidential information through AI. We need to safeguard our student and staff information. So that is the presentation that I have for you on the AI policy. I'm happy to pause for questions or...
Yeah, why don't we take one at a time? These are, yeah. So are there any questions from the committee about the AI policy? Yeah, member Castellanos.
Thank you so much, member Dugan, and everyone that worked on this. I know this was also something I was keeping an eye on throughout the years. I saw other districts like grappling with AI because it rolled out really quick and how it's impacted K through 12 learning, and it's impacted families, staff, a lot of folks. I'm curious to hear what some of the opposing views were from the students and also in general of just the policy. While you guys were constructing this, I'm sure there was probably some conversations that might have been held that I wasn't a part of, so.
So, member Castellanos, thank you. And that's correct, we have been in touch throughout this process as well. And I know you've been an advocate for sort of getting something on the books in terms of AI. I think the level of usage is something that varies from person to person. So I'm here as a drafter. I actually hardly use AI, I'll tell you, you know, personally. Shannon and Noel, who helped draft, who really helped draft this, use it much more. But I think the fear is around if there are not sort of, if there are not sort of governing documents and governance on the process, what we don't want to do is replace teaching with AI, and we don't want to replace student work with AI. And so the agreement and disagreement comes in those areas for the most part. And so that's sort of why you have kind of a middle ground policy here that embraces but governance.
One question I have about the governance and process is the discipline. And I understand if, I know when I reviewed it earlier, I saw that we're going to refer to the policy on plagiarism and what we are default, right? What we usually do if someone is, you know, caught with that. But the detection piece, who's doing the detecting, if that makes sense? Do we have a software, or is it the staff responsibility? Who's responsible for that?
We haven't got there yet, but that was most definitely part of the initial brainstorm of a thing that we need to tackle. I will tell you that initially, the thinking on this policy was it might be effective in September. I think that that's probably aggressive for reasons like that, and that came up through the process as well. I'm happy to defer to superintendent as well.
I just want to add, in response to your question, we, our Microsoft suite that we have for all employees and all students called Copilot, provides the AI tool embedded into, you know, it's free, it's accessible through the portal and the student portal. It also can allow a teacher to scan a written document from a student and ask it if it has any AI patterns in it. So although we haven't purchased any software to actually do ongoing detection, I think that's something that will confer with principals and teachers at the point where, like, do we need that if we already have something like Copilot where? And typically, you can, I think our teachers are very skilled and know their students' capacity of writing, and when you notice something that is written in a tone, right? Or from a perspective that a student has not expressed, I think our teachers are able to manage that with classroom management as well.
Do we have data on plagiarism in general? So I don't know if there's, for you guys, because I'm just thinking about future software purchases, at least to prepare maybe some data of like, what, so we have classroom staff who catch it initially? You have the Microsoft tool that you're saying that we could scan, and then there's...
It supports it, but there are tools like turnitin.com, where teachers, like, if we purchased it district-wide, teachers would be able to quickly upload a document, and it would tell them right away if there, you know, there was a pattern of any material that wasn't cited properly. So...
And it's a growing problem, just for the record. This is something that higher ed's dealing with. It's a very large issue. Because I think when it comes down to crafting a document, research papers, like, all that, that's important work to your learning. And I think AI has kind of been a little bit of a wrench in that process in learning, and I think there's fundamentals that are very important when you do that kind of research. There are benefits to AI, I understand, like, that side of it, too. You know, I get that it's a tool to gather research, you know, and there's things that are beneficial. I just, I do appreciate the fact that we're being very proactive on this process, and we're grappling with a very complex policy. And I think that's kind of what, coming in, that was some of what I was thinking. So I appreciate you guys. This is very difficult to, this is, but you guys are very proactive, and I appreciate it for all you guys that worked on this.
Member Gailey, I believe you has your question.
Oh. Reading through this document, it looks very well-written. It's covering all aspects. And I like to think it's like a living document, is it? It can change over time periodically.
Exactly. So there's not most, I would say that the bulk of the AI governance, the AI governance will happen outside the policy and in the procedures, so there's that piece of it. But also the explicit anticipation that this isn't going to be your final AI policy. It's sort of like dress code, cell phones, things that are going to come up every few years, and with AI, I probably predict more often than that, so.
Yeah, we won't have a chance to wait 20 years.
I don't think so.
You know, because some of them, as you know, Charlie, we have waited a while.
We did.
So the other thing is, I have been to the Copilot on our website, and I have used that. It was a very good document. I suggest to all of you at least practice it, because it's sort of, it's interesting. And I only did that because my computer broke down, and I had to get a new computer, and I had to get everything put on it. So it was tough. But that's how I ran into Copilot, even though she's talked about it many times, I just ran into it. And it's good to know you have turned it in, so it doesn't put all of the, I really think you did a great job. You're covering the district's responsibility, the staff's responsibility, and it's a living document, so I'm okay with this. Thank you very much for your time.
I appreciate it.
Okay. All right. So you know further questions? I'd need a motion to put this to the full committee from...
Motion to bring it to the committee as a whole?
Second. Roll call, please.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Reed, absent. Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And our next policy is policy EE, and it's transportation services. So there's been some tweaks to that that we need to go over tonight.
Yes. So transportation services, this is your existing policy EE. There's no substantive changes to this policy for general education students. All elementary students who live two miles or more from their assigned neighborhood school would get transportation. That runs parallel to a Massachusetts statute. There's no change to that. There is exceptions in the discretion of the superintendent, and there's a line in this policy that exists in the prior policies that existed in the six years that I've been in this job. This will apply particularly to any student who must travel within a hazardous area from any school. There's no change to that. What the policy does do is it corrects some erroneous desegregation language. Sentences one and three refer to transportation on the basis of desegregation, which hasn't existed in Lynn for a long time. But the overhaul under Mayor Nicholson, when you were chairperson of the policy subcommittee, and continuing through current chairperson Dugan, that overhaul with Mass Association of School Committees whittled us down from about 400 to about 270 policies. And in this one, I found a little error, and I think it's an explainable error, which is that a friend of many of ours, Dave Hegan, the former director of transportation, passed in 2022, right as all of this was happening. And so there are lines there in sentences one and three that I've struck in the new draft that align our policy with practice, that don't reference transportation on the basis of desegregation, which unfortunately fell through the cracks during that process, I think unfortunately, due to the timing of Dave's passing. In addition to that, and at the same time, coincidentally, the Transportation Department has been looking to add some language to the policy to ensure that students who are on an IEP are not dropped off at their home and left at their home without a parent or guardian present. And really, that language is needed by NRT, our provider, in order to keep the child on the bus or rewrite, route the child to a new location. And so what you'll see in the draft, and it's a lined-out draft, you have the standalone is probably easier to read than the small print up here, is that we've taken just some superfluous language out of the top paragraph. We have, in paragraph number one, we have taken out the piece about desegregation. We've done the same in the bottom of three. And then we have replaced paragraph three with language about ensuring the safety of students who receive transportation on the basis of their IEP. I want you to know that we looked at other districts to this. We worked with Christina Colletta in special education, Johnny Castillo in transportation, and attorney Katie Meinault on this language. It's largely based on the language that's used in the Cambridge public schools, and we thought suitable for our purposes as well. So that is what I have on transportation. I'm happy to take any questions. This is the clean version of the new policy I'll put on the screen for you as well.
Any questions from the committee? Okay. Seeing no questions, we need a motion to put that to the full committee.
Motion to move it to the committee as a whole?
Second. Roll call, please.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Reed, absent. Member Sadowite?
Yes.
All right. And then the last policy we need to look at, again, some changes to our student cellphone and personal electronic devices. So again, turn to Gallal.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So this is policy file J I C J, the student cellphone and electronic device policy. And I'll just say a couple of words at the outset as I put our existing policy on the screen now. This is like dress code. This is never a consensus policy. We try to do the best we can, looking at trends and looking at needs in schools, but this is, this is a policy where it's hard to reach consensus across any groups, but every district sort of has a policy on it. And so we're coming forward with a recommendation for some changes effective in September. I want to tell you, though, that the changes are not radical. The changes are a slight tightening, I would describe them as, in addition to updated language for the times. So this is your existing policy. It's pretty short. It is from 2021. And if we think about cell phones in 2021 versus now, a lot has changed. There are a lot more kinds of devices, and so we probably need a more robust policy. But the crux of this policy remains the same in the draft, which is paragraph one here in your existing policy is an off-and-out-of-sight provision. And then this is where the tightening is. An exception to this policy may be made by schools to allow for the responsible use of electronic devices. And so what you currently have right now is different rules at different schools, cafeteria, hallways, school grounds during school hours, walking between, you know, classes and buildings. That is not calibrated. And so, and I want to give a lot of credit here to Dr. Rody Peña, the principal of Lynn English, who in wintertime was advocating that we get together secondary leaders and talk about, talk about calibrating processes under this policy. And so we had that meeting with almost all secondary leaders. We had that meeting with Deputy Gores, and we shifted quickly away from just calibration of processes and decided to propose a revised policy to the superintendent and to the school committee. And the themes that you're going to see are uniformity across the district, a slightly tightened approach. We already have a restrictive approach. This is slightly more restrictive. Modernizing language because of the new types of devices, and expanding beyond the contents of our existing policy around responsibility for the device. Who's responsible if you decide to bring a device to school? And setting parameters on how students and families contact each other during the school day. So that's what you're going to see. Coincidentally, at the state level, in the wintertime also, the Attorney General prepared a model policy, and Desi circulated that model policy. And the model policy that she came out with says at the elementary level, you can't bring it to school. At the secondary level, you can't access it. What I'm looking, what I'm putting before you looks pretty similar to her policy, but it doesn't differentiate between the levels. In addition to that, Senator Brendan Crichton has proposed legislation to further restrict cellphone usage statewide. Chairperson Dugan and I have been in touch with Senator Crichton throughout the process as well. Have folks heard bell-to-bell, that term? So we're starting to define now the different kinds of cellphone policies, and not everyone agrees on what each definition means, but ultimately, bell-to-bell and off-and-away are the two that are trending right now. Bell-to-bell is the idea that you don't even have access to the phone. Off-and-away is just that, it's off-and-away. The research we did in other districts to support that trend is here. Boston is off-and-away. Springfield is off-and-away. Worcester is off-and-away with some wiggle room for educational use only. Brockton is interesting. At the middle school, they allow them to use phones at lunchtime only. Otherwise, it's pretty much a restrictive policy. Salem is starting to introduce the pouches, pouch system. Lynnfield was a bit of an outlier, where they do allow some cellphone usage. And folks may have seen in the news in the last week or two that PBD is proposing very currently a pretty strict bell-to-bell policy. Following that first February get-together, we had another get-together, and we invited in the elementary principals at that point. Chairperson Dugan was there. We also had representatives from Senator Crichton's staff and members of executive leadership. There have been various meetings with the superintendent and the deputies, and one that Dr. Alvarez and I did, that was, I think, a lot of, was a great meeting, was with your student cabinet, and where the students had viewpoints on it, but generally in alignment with what we're proposing here to you today. And really, they want to know what the rule is, and as a general matter, are hoping to eliminate distraction in school. So the draft is in front of you on the screen, but probably easier to read, once again, on the standalone document, and I'll just go through it quickly and happy to take questions. We first define phones. We second define other electronic devices, and the rule is distinguished between the two. Phones are going to be off-and-away, if you vote this in. Other electronic devices, you may not use, but it's not that you have to put them away. It's not that every time you go into school, you have to take off your smart watch. It's just the expectation you don't use those capabilities. Dr. Alvarez, during that meeting, one of your student cabinet members, and I was bragging on him a little bit, he was a good sport, had the smart headphones on. And he was wearing them around his neck, not accessing them, but I pointed out, you know, that's what this policy does. It allows you to do that, as long as you're not accessing them during the school day. In addition to being off-and-away, no flashing, no vibrating, nothing audible on the cellphone. And schools, and this is where procedures will come into place, may provide storage options. And there are a couple of schools that are piloting different kinds of storage options already. Violation of the policy results in progressive discipline. That's not, we're going to suspend you or expel you on the first go-around. Progressive discipline is the rule for everything, pretty much, not just this. And then finally, that the expectation is that, you know, students and families contact them, each other at appropriate intervals and through the office, not through cellphones during the school day. And the exceptions here are fewer than the existing policy. They're really disability, medical condition, IEP 504 language. So that's the proposal we have for you, and I'm happy, of course, to take any questions on it.
Questions on the committee? Yes, member Gailey.
When we talk about the cellphone policy, and we talk about teachers basically implementing that cellphone policy, is there any wiggle room for teachers to use their own discretion if a child takes out their cellphone? Because I have an example of a student, and I had a very strict principle, that students would tell them if they were in my class, go and tell this person that I allowed this person to take out a phone. So the person takes out the phone, and all she's doing is looking at the time, because my clock is broken. So like, is there any wiggle room so that faculty members could be able to not be penalized by the administration? Because it was very terrorizing to me as a teacher, and that was an actual story.
So under the formal policy, there was more wiggle room and wiggle room for things like that. Under the proposal before you, there's really not. And it's the purview of the school committee, of course, what you want to vote in terms of policy. And as I said at the beginning, cellphone is not a consensus policy. It's a policy where sometimes we, yeah, but I'll give you sort of the arguments to where we got, where we are, which are that students have laptops now as their primary device that are issued by the school. And so when we wrote this in 2021 and included that wiggle room for the cellphone, that was before we thought laptops would be a permanent fixture beyond the pandemic on a one-to-one basis. And so ultimately, the folks that worked on this really had a theme of uniformity, of more restriction generally, with certainly some outliers. But of course, it's your purview to...
And she would be, they would be able to see the time. That's right. Good point. Thank you.
No, thank you.
Member Sadowite?
So mine's more, thank you for your presentation. Mine's more of a comment and a concern versus a question. I reflect it off of the can't access, you know, can't bring aspect of it. I'm personally opposed to this policy. Well, I understand that the state law requires certain policies to be adopted, and that the intent of this policy is to reduce distractions. I think that it may overall, the impact of this ban may have some unintended consequences that can undermine student safety and well-being. And as a parent who does have students that are enrolled in the district, and also as a nurse practitioner who works extensively with family members, I think that this is really, really bothersome to me, knowing that my student would have no access to be able to, even the store-away part to me, in a designated area. If for any reason, there's any type of reasoning, you know, God forbid, there's, you know, something as far as someone coming into the school, they don't have access to their phone to reach out to the first person they want to speak to, and that's the parent, right? And so I think that there are also some underlying factors that are concerning with having this put in place that I do think needs to be considered. And then also, as a parent, too, on the other side of things, routine check-ins. The current policy that we have now with being able to access them in the cafeteria or study hall or breaks or wherever, at least you get that peace of mind speaking to, you know, your child. Whereas not speaking to them for the whole day and knowing at the end of the day is the only time you could speak to them is definitely concerning to me. So I just wanted to voice that.
And that's a correct reading of the policy, and for sure, you know, a bit more restrictive than the existing policy, or correct reading of the draft.
Member Gailey.
So that makes me wonder, were there parents involved in this?
So with some policies, we do get extensive parent feedback. A few years ago, this policy, we did do that. We didn't very honestly do it this go-around. It came from really the Desi advice that had been circulated and through principals' advocacy. Desi advice that had been circulated and through principals' advocacy. On the committee of principals who looked at it, there were several who were people who were parents, including parents of Lynn Public Schools students, myself being one. So there were several in that way. But in terms of parents outside of Lynn Public Schools, the answer is no on this policy.
So there was some parent input?
There was, but, and certainly members of the committee, just as you did, Member Satterwhite spoke, you know, wearing their hat as a parent. But we did not do sort of affirmative outreach to parents in and of that capacity on this one.
Thank you.
Member Dugan?
Yes, thank you. I guess mine's more of a comment, too. It's just, I think with everything coming down from the state, it's important for us to, you know, kind of be, I guess, try to be ahead of the curve a bit on this one. You know, my kids have been out of high school for a couple of years now, so I guess it's easier for me to say that. But I think, being a teacher, and seeing the way that phone, even at, you know, third grade level where I teach, but seeing the way phones can really disrupt the day, and be in interference with children's learning is important. And it does, you know, kids are addicted to their phones. We're addicted to our phones, you know? I was sitting at the beach today, and just, that's all I was doing, looking at my phone. So it, you know, and my point of view is, you know, it is a distraction. It is a distraction for the students. And I think that getting that distraction out is going to increase the learning and the level of engagement in our classrooms. Hopefully, that's the plan. The other side of it is, with safety, when, you know, there's an emergency in the school, my thought is, you don't want your kids looking at phones. You know, you want them listening to the first responders. You want them making sure that they're, you know, adhering to what the teachers are having them do, not, you know, oh my gosh, let me get this on my Twitter feed, or whatever they're doing. So that's sort of my stance on it as well. I just feel like there's, yes, this is, would be difficult, I think, for families, but I do think it's necessary. I do think it's necessary.
Member Dugan, may I just speak to the, and I know Member Pena has his hand up, too, but I just want, because you and Member Satterwhite both raised that point, and it's interesting, in our committee work, the same thing happened. And there was one particular principal, Lynn Public Schools' parent, who had that viewpoint about wanting to talk to her child if something ever happened. And then there were others who said, well, actually, we want to leave the lines of communication open, so that the only communication that really goes out is the communication through law enforcement, through official channels. So that debate did occur, just as occurring. So you're in good company having this debate tonight that occurred on our committee, too. I'm sorry to interrupt, Member Pena.
Not an interruption at all.
Uh, Member Pena.
Yeah, just to echo on what Member Dugan was saying. Me personally, as a parent, you know, I think cellphones could be a distraction. I have parents in the public school systems. Also with safety, you know, we like to have some kind of order. When you have many children, you know, accessing devices, you know, that could be a, you know, issue with safety, security, you know, people going on the phones, and just to have some order. As a parent, I remember my son was attending Classical High School when there was a violent incident, and just, it was just chaotic. All the parents went again, and there was no order, because, you know, the devices, people calling parents. And I think, you know, keeping the devices away, having some type of order and safety is really important. Also, speaking to many teachers, you know, that's what I get. Cellphones are a distraction, you know. As a CDL driver, commercial, cellphones are distractions. They're a big distraction to many, and I think this is a, just when you look at the big picture, it's better just, you know, keep the phones away, and it's, you know, keep the distractions, minimize the distractions. That's all. Just wanted to comment on that.
Yes, Member Satterwhite.
We yield to Member Casianos. Oh, I'm sorry, yes. So, all great points, all great views. I think there's also, for me, I think there's still some work to do. I think we need parent input that's outside of LPS, whether it was a forum or a survey. I think there's dialogue and input that we need before we adopt this. I think there's a lot of good information, strong information, to weigh out each view. I really appreciated the levels, from phone-free to off-away and limited use. Senator Crichton's proposed legislation, and I know that they put it forward. I actually got to review it. It looks, it's really robust. But we also want to make sure that we digest it properly, so when we implement it, and it talks about the challenges of implementation. I think we have to provide confidence to parents, to families, because a lot of those crises that you're, that were, like those scenarios that we're talking about, do, it creates the tension that we're talking about right now. So I think there needs to be an opportunity to have that, I guess, that opportunity for families to weigh in. And the timing of this is at the end of the year. So I don't know if we are rolling out surveys, or are we, like, during the summer? If that's a possibility. I don't know if that's something that the policy subcommittee would like to work on.
Yeah, no, I'd be, I'd be more than happy to do that this summer, if that's, you know, where the committee directs me to move, that would be fine with me.
Member Dugan, may I?
Yes, absolutely.
Share something? Thank you. This school year, we, again, we're proposing to keep a very moderate approach, right, in which students are less distracted, not using their phones. And in observing this in classrooms and at the middle and the high school level, I have to say, just like Attorney Gallo shared, the comments from, that came from the cabinet, that are all high school students, this was not a challenge in terms of disciplinary actions with our students. And luckily, we didn't have any incidents where there was an emergency and students had to actually, you know, were, the situations that you, some of you described. We would never obviously want that. But we have taken a very moderate approach to make sure that students continue to use phones for safety reasons, and that we educate them, explaining that when is the appropriate use of the cellphone, right? When is it appropriate to use? And if you have an emergency, sometimes a student has a personal emergency, right? And like, to approach the adult, the teacher, a staff member, and say, I need to use my phone because I'm having an emergency, whatever it is. You know, I think any adult would be more than open, right, to allowing a student to communicate, whether it's a parent, to support through any other means as well. But we used this version of what we were doing with the cellphones in classrooms this entire year. And the teachers and principals shared with us that they had great success with it. We saw it. The student engagement was, at the middle and the high school, is extremely important, because it, you know, sometimes in the fourth and fifth grade, it's been a problem in some of our elementaries. But particularly in the middle and the high schools, when the phones are away, and I don't mean like locked up. I mean, like, sometimes it's a pouch, sometimes it's just on a pouch on a wall. And I've seen, I've been in a classroom, it was at Lynn English, where a student said to the teacher during a math lesson, I, you know, I need to view something on my phone. It wasn't even to make a phone call. It was to view something on the phone, a graphic that he had, that he wanted to recreate and do some angles with, for, you know, for math. And the teacher was like, grab it. Like, so it hasn't been a challenge for us. And I would want to caution, right, the committee to make sure that we continue to keep a moderate approach to this. We do not want to be policing students. We do not want to have combative situations where we have to, you know, take phones or any of that. Because an approach that is sort of what the bill is proposing, where phones are not in the environment at all, would create that. And I think at that point, the committee would need to make a decision on how we would approach a situation like that, if that were to pass. But I think a moderate approach to, you know, being able to provide students less distractions has worked for us thus far. So I just wanted to share that input.
Uh, Member Pena, then Member Casianos.
Yeah, and also that, you know, there's more ways of communication, communicating with the school, you know. I get to parent square a lot. There's also the, my son's at Angles. I have one at Angles, and there's a direct, like, messaging system with the teacher. I even get reminded from my son to pick me up early, Dad, you know, things like that. He tells his teachers. So there's a lot of ways to communicate nowadays, you know, with your students. So just wanted to comment on that.
Uh, Member Casianos.
Just so clear, Dr. Alvarez, so are you saying that the current policy that we're utilizing is, it's working versus?
Yes.
So what are your reflections on the draft that we're talking about tonight?
I believe the draft supports what we're currently doing. And Attorney Gallo can share more about that, specifically in what the language says that supports what we're doing. I would caution the committee to decide to go to an approach where cellphones are very restricted, right? And a lot of times, it's not even the safety during school that becomes an issue. It's the to and from school. It's being in school when, you know, you're potentially in another place other than a classroom, that whether it's a real or a perceived, right, fear for students, like, they need to have that phone to communicate in case something happens. And we want to support that. Does that, Member Casianos, does that answer your question?
And tonight's to, so again, I just do want to ask, as if, I know you guys are in the policy subcommittee, but I do really would like to see parent input, that piece completely, like, at least that opportunity to occur before this gets moved forward. I do appreciate the explanation. That was very helpful. But it just, I think it is very important to have that, the extra insight, so.
Uh, you got Member Satterwhite, and then Member Gailey.
I want to echo that with Member Casianos. I think that we should definitely, I'm probably not the only parent that's probably thinking this way, and that we should get some more input on it. I also just want to make a comment on yours. So I do, I know some classrooms do have the, put them away somewhere. I mean, I honestly personally still don't feel entirely great about that as well. Like, I know that it's unpredictable, that, you know, God forbid, something happens where someone comes into the school. I personally don't want my child having to rimmage through a pouch to try to find, you know, a phone that was put away with 20 other students to call me to, like, say something. Whether it could just simply be last words, or just things like that are really troubling to me, that I'm thinking of as a parent, that others are probably thinking of as well. So I just kind of want to put that out there as well, for you guys to take that into consideration as well. Thank you.
Member Gailey.
So, I've been on both sides of the coin here, because I've lived through classrooms where students use cellphones freely in the private sector. And their experience of having those phones in the classroom could be something like, I'm going to have to speak to your mother, or something like that. And then it's like, oh, he, she's on the phone right now. It's bad experiences. But that has happened to people when they're teaching. So it is a distraction, but if it's working the way we're trying it...
I'm sorry, are you asking me?
Yeah, like it's working?
The current policy?
Yes.
According to Dr. Alvarez, what we're doing is currently working?
Okay.
But this, just to kind of echo Attorney Gallo's comments in the beginning, this is to bring consistency. You can correct me if I'm wrong, to the district, where I think it was classical was a little more strict than English. English was allowing them at lunch, and, you know, so this is more about consistency and just making sure on the same page.
I would like to, like, recommend that you do do a survey with parents' input, but educating them to the needs of not having cellphones present in the classroom. There's no real reason for it, except if you need it, like the example the superintendent made. And that's my experience, because we have our laptops. We have those tools. But I do think we should, like the other members of the committee are stating, we should do a little survey, but educate the parents, so they know what this policy is and what it will entail.
Right.
Thank you.
It's like, may I, no question.
No, thank you, Member Dugan. I think it sounds like we're going to be continuing to work on and focus on this policy, along with the rest of the state. Obviously, the state's going through the same conversation. So I agree, we want to get parent feedback, as well as continuing to get student feedback, and educated feedback, and administrative feedback. I think as we do that, we just, we want to be really thoughtful about, about how that happens, because I think it's also an opportunity for education as well, for parents. So, you know, I think particularly hearing from public safety and first responders and so on, and sort of what some of the potential pitfalls might be of different alternatives, and what kind of is in the public interest there. And so, you know, as we think about what that engagement might look like, maybe an opportunity for forums, or town halls, or things like that. We did that, we did that frequently during the COVID, the digital town halls that had a lot of success and participation. And I think people, folks are going to be expecting this, as they see the conversations happening at the state level. It's, you know, it's on the news that different schools, districts are trying different things. So I think people will be primed to participate. It seems to me like we could adopt this proposal, bring us into alignment as a district with what is predominantly the status quo, in that, that folks are not supposed to be using it during the day, and then proceed with that, that process as we, as we move forward, which would then eliminate the inconsistency across schools, which would by no means preclude doing any kind of intensive feedback and evaluation over the course of the next year. So, yeah, whatever that's worth.
I just have a question, Attorney Gallo, and I think, I just want to make sure that we're all aligned in our thinking. If, we've talked about Senator Crichton's bill and some of the other bills that are similar in nature, if those all become one bill, or one of those gets passed, and we've discussed this as well, would our policy, we would have to align to whatever the state decision is, correct?
That's exactly correct, Superintendent. So Senator Crichton's legislation, then there are a couple of legislations, but here's what his says. His doesn't put forward a model policy. It says, "Each school district shall have a comprehensive policy to prohibit student access to personal electronic devices during the school day." And so that is more restrictive than what I'm proposing here tonight. But that is to prohibit actual access and not just to cellphones, is his, his bill. The Andrea Campbell, Attorney General, put out, as I mentioned earlier, a model policy. Here's what it says for middle and high schools. "Students are not permitted to access their cellphones or other devices at school during school hours. Students are encouraged to leave their devices at home." And then it gets into sort of a mandated storing of devices at school. So the stuff coming out at the state level, if it does pass, we'll probably be back at the table proposing something more restrictive than what we're proposing here tonight. Chairperson Dugan can attest to this. The way that I did the discussion on our second gathering was to come in with a really restrictive policy and get feedback, and then we ended up with this. But you saw that happen firsthand.
It was very interesting, yeah.
Yeah, interesting exercise, so.
And if I could just add to that, I think, yeah, thank you. I think, like the superintendent said, there's multiple bills on this, and I, so I think there's going to be a conversation at the state level. And I know that Senator Crichton would be happy to hear from us, or, you know, individuals from Lynn about what, you know, whatever thoughts are. But I do, I do expect there to be, you know, nobody knows exactly what's going to come out of the legislative process. So obviously, we'll follow up closely, but I think we have the opportunity now to do what we think makes sense for us in this, in this moment. And then, of course, to the extent that the state makes a decision, that'll be the decision, you know, that'll govern there. But there certainly is a process for us to give, an opportunity for us to get feedback in the meantime, so. But there, there certainly is a process for us to give, an opportunity for us to get feedback in the meantime, so. Yes, member Castellanos.
It's kind of, but, but the local levels, they still are going to have to, it's, it's going to take time for that, to roll, if, if, once it happens at the state level, right? It's going to take, that's going to take time for that, to the implementation of that. So, will we move forward and then amend it, revise it, and whenever it comes in, we'll just?
Potentially in the spring, right?
Yeah, I mean, sorry to say, but what, what, it depends how they write it too, like, they could pass a, a bill, and the governor could sign it into law, and it says it's effective for the next school year, right, for, for September twenty seven. They could make it effective right then, and it would become effective whether or not we adopted it or not, that, that automatically over, supersedes our policy. They, they could also write something that, that leaves it up to the district, they could say, we're gonna, we're gonna say you can't use it during class, but it's up to the district if that means you can't access it, or, or, or you have to put it in a locker, you can't bring it in at all, whatever. So I think there's different options.
I, I, I would also ask, I would ask that we provide some sort of education to the general public, right? That I feel like this is a very important policy, um, about those changes coming down the pipeline, because that's a change, and I think that's what's causing the friction here, so I think there's more, obviously, we're, we're in the, we're in it now, but there's families out there that are not going to know what's going on, so I think it's important for us to, I think, I, I, these are the changes that we're going to be seeing, and this is what we're, this is where our thought is here, but I think it's going to be important to be ambassadors of this particular item. I think there's a lot more that folks are probably going to want to weigh in on, on this one.
Can I just, yeah, I, I think, I think that's a great point, and I think it's a, I think it's something we could do even now, if you were to, if we were to adopt this policy, and the communication that goes out, the district could signal, this is what it's going to be in September, but you should know that this is likely going to change, or, this, this very well could change based on whatever the state decides, something like that, yeah. Any other questions from the committee? All right, I would need a motion to put this to the full committee, or?
Motion to move it to the committee as a whole.
Okay, uh, second, roll call please.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Yes, you are on the policy. The cell phones. All right, a little confusion there, but I think, uh, that's it, that's all our policies for now, so we would need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second, roll call please.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Reed? Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Like to bring the, um, bring to audit the Buildings and Grounds Subcommittee meeting, roll call please.
Member Gailey?
Present.
President. Member Castellanos?
Present.
Member Reed?
Yes, present.
Okay, well, I received some notification from Brett Bennett on a greenhouse that we, we, we already took a vote on in, on November fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, and we, we voted yes on the Subcommittee, and we moved it forward to the whole, so could Hazel Kiefer come forward and explain what's going on here? Did I get the last name right?
Yes, hi, Hazel Kiefer, hello. Um, this is actually a new proposal.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, so, this is for Ingalls School Farm, located at the Ingalls School. I'm Hazel Kiefer, the farm manager, I have my director, Farms and Food, Miriam, here with me as well, from the Food Project. We're a nonprofit, we lease land both at Tech and Ingalls from you all, the school district. We're producing food for farmers market in Lynn. We're also, um, hiring young people from the city and the North Shore to work on the farm every year, teenagers aged fourteen to seventeen. We are currently using greenhouse space at North Shore Community College. That is becoming not enough space for our needs, because they are expanding their horticulture program offerings, which is fantastic, obviously. So we are looking to add a propagation structure at Ingalls School. This would be within the existing footprint of our lease. It would be a non-permanent structure, meaning there would be no concrete footing underneath it. And it would be made of polycarbonate, so a twenty by thirty structure is what we're proposing. And we have worked with Brett Bennett at ISD to get his preliminary approval, and based on you all's approval, we would move forward with fundraising toward making this happen. We start all of the seedlings that we use for our production at the farm, and for pretty much all of the community gardens in the city of Lynn. This year, with the reduced space, we have been splitting our propagation production between Lynn and Lincoln, Mass, which, as you can imagine, is a lot of driving back and forth, that is far. So we're hoping to bring it all under one roof, so to speak, and have enough space to do what we need to do for the farm, and then also what we need to do in order to continue resourcing community gardeners here in the city.
Questions, anyone? Member Castellanos.
Hazel, thank you so much for taking the steps to get the preliminary work done with Brett. We appreciate, I appreciate reading the document, this was really helpful, and to see all the different works that you've, actually, over the years, you've worked really hard to always prepare, um, pretty extensive, uh, reports to us. Uh, it's helpful in preparing for these changes. I definitely, uh, I do support this, so. I don't know, I don't have any other further, it was very clear, I think, I, I could make a motion to?
I'd like to talk.
Oh, yeah.
Do you have any questions?
No.
I'm sorry.
Do you have any questions?
Member Gailey.
Thank you. Just to be clear in his notification, this letter. I spoke with him on the phone, well, not spoke to him, messaged him. And on the twenty-fifth of Tuesday, they passed an ordinance, um, from the City Council that a greenhouse would be allowed to go anywhere at this point, okay? The only thing that's stipulated in this is that you, you are subject to the issuance of building permits, correct?
Yes.
So you're just asking, um, for the permission to build this, even though it's in the ordinance, so you can do it. But we want to make sure that you're going to get the building, proper building permits that are necessary.
Absolutely, yes. And I'm not sure if there's a process by which I let you know that I've done that, but I'm happy to follow up with this.
Oh, trust me, I'll know if you didn't. So, could I, my? Okay, could I have a motion, please?
Motion to move this to the committee, the whole?
Uh, second.
Roll call.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
A motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. Oh. Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Castellanos?
Thank you.
Member Reed?
Hazel. Thank you very much, Hazel, thank you.
Great job, thank you. All right, open mic. Nobody, okay. The open mic session is designed to provide an opportunity for citizens to express their views on matters of concern. The school committee sessions are not designed to encourage debate or lengthy exchange of views, but to have the committee understand numerous points of view. The committee would appreciate speaking, speakers keeping their presentation in three minutes in order to accommodate as many people as time permits. The chair has the right to limit the number of speakers on the same topic to three. All speakers must be at least eighteen years of age or enrolled in a high school in Lynn Public Schools District, having discussed their views with a student government representative. Anyone wishing to speak at open mic? Anyone for open mic? Last call for open mic, and we will close the open mic portion of the evening and move into the twelfth regular meeting of the school committee, roll call please.
Member Castellanos?
Present.
Member Dugan?
Present.
Member Gailey?
Present.
Member Peña?
Present.
Member Reed? Member Sadowite?
Present.
Mayor Nicholson?
Present.
If those are able, please join me. Rise and salute to the flag, remain standing for a moment of silence.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence in memory of Cheryl Gregan, passed away June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, retired confidential secretary, and Linda Richardson, retired clerk, passed June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Thank you. Next time's the minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes, um, A, public hearing on June twelfth, twenty twenty-five, and B, the eleventh regular meeting on June twelfth, twenty twenty-five.
Second. Motion made second, and roll call please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Member Reed? Member Sadowite?
No. On page one, um, it says that I was absent and present at the same time, so I just wanted that corrected. Thank you.
You can accept that as a friendly amendment?
Thank you.
If you want to. Yes, I'm?
And yes.
Yeah, okay, all right, good.
Good catch.
Did you, did you get, did you got that? Do you need to finish the, the roll?
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. Yeah, 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 no, we're good, we're good. All right, appointments and elections. Why, why, I don't want to rush you.
This evening, we are excited to share, I'm excited to share that we have, um, three principal appointments. All three principals have been, um, in an interim capacity, and are principals that are, um, very engaged in their school community, and I know the school communities are thrilled that I'm going to announce these appointments this evening. For Cobbett Elementary School, Lisa Colvin White, she's not able to be with us this evening, but she, um, is also thrilled and excited to take the position. And she, uh, is just, uh, one of our phenomenal rising stars. Then we also have, for Shoemaker Elementary School, another incredible rising star, Alicia McDougall. She's been interim at Shoemaker since April, and has been doing extremely well. So, we are just so lucky to be able to keep our, our current, um, interim principals. And lastly, another interim principal, um, another rising star who has gone into Pickering Middle School and changed the course of, um, the student achieve, starting to change the course of student achievement, and change the course of the environment and the culture, and we're so excited and proud to, um, have Renee Philbrook here with us this evening. Renee, congratulations. So, I want to just thank all the three principals for the hard work, um, that they've put in as interims, and also, uh, to the interview committees and the school communities for being so supportive of keeping them as the principals. Renee, would you like to share any thoughts? Sure.
All I would like to say is thank you, I'm honored. I've been, um, involved in Lynn Public Schools for twenty-seven years. I'm passionate for everything that I'm doing at the school, and we're really looking forward to next year. We're already in the planning process, and we continue, uh, I will continue to work hard along with all of my team, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations to all the appointments. Next we have presentation.
Mayor Nicholson, I'm sorry, could I, uh, make a motion to amend the agenda? I know Attorney Gallo's waiting for something at the end, so maybe we could. Or is it?
Sure.
Okay.
I would just note that we also have a presentation, it looks like the presenter had company.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Charlie, Charlie's out, I think, in the hallway, because she was?
No, no, the other Charlie.
The other Charlie, the baby.
The baby Charlie.
Take it back.
Baby Charlie. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I can surely have her join us if you'd like, and that's in case you don't want to hear me. Thank you so much for your time. I'm honored to step in and present on behalf of Deputy Cohen, who is at conference with one of our principals, Principal Zukavsky, and Dr. Shannon Gardner at a PBL Works. But I did have the opportunity to put together a short presentation for you, just to give you an update of where we are in the strategic planning process. So, um, again, we're just going to reflect on the progress to date, um, share the roadmap ahead in the next ninety days or so, and reframe for greater impact. So when you look at this slide, this just captures, uh, what we walked you through today. I'm sorry, what we've walked you through since we started this process. So we went through the strategic planning process, which was rooted in our shared values, we engaged a variety of stakeholders. We did the landscape analysis, designed it, aligned the plan, and launched it. Um, and then after then, stakeholder engagement, which also included some of you as well, with our families, community members, students, staff. We also engaged some of our community partners in some working groups in helping shaping the vision, and how can they be more engaged in our next five years of our strategic planning process to improve outcomes for our students? And, and now we're at the stage where we're implementing our five-year plan, uh, for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-nine, where we have a clear mission and vision for how the district will move forward and best serving the Lynn community, but it's also anchored in the profile of a graduate, um, for what we believe, um, that we would like our students to leave Lynn Public Schools with. And, and then finally, you've also heard some updates to some of the activities that we've been doing throughout the year to lift the work of the strategic plan, uh, whether it was affinity group, whether it's training. This week, we engaged in QTEL training around culturally and linguistically responsive training. We've also had some conversations where the executive leadership team and the principals talked about school belonging and how that sits within instructional realm. So we talked to you a lot about what we've been doing. And so, um, as we look at the roadmap ahead of what's next this summer and fall twenty twenty-five, what will we be doing? So we're just wrapping up the school year on Monday, and so now we're going to look at our data and start analyzing it from the school year. There are multiple components of data each year, um, we have outcomes that measure the impact of the strategic plan. I also want to note that as we're thinking about the data, um, as well, that, um, each priority will not be a component of each year, and so you think about, um, kind of like the, which comes first, the cart before the horse, or the horse before? So there are some things that you won't see until later on in the strategic plan, maybe in year three or four. And then in August, twenty twenty-five, we're going to refine, based on our outcomes, we're going to refine our measures and some of our tools that we're using. And then prepare insights to share with the larger team, the larger district, and our stakeholders that we originally engaged in the beginning of the process. So this isn't something that we engage in the process, but we want to keep, um, continue and engage you throughout the next five years. And then finally, in October, we'll be able to share our outcomes, complete picture, and so we might be able to talk about attendance today, but we can't talk about our MCAS, because that data isn't back yet, which is part of our strategic plan. And then you also know that that data is embargoed for a while, so, uh, for a while after we receive the data as a district. So we want to make sure that we can share a complete picture with you. And then we're going to talk about not just the data, but what those trends tell us, and how we need to refine our strategic plan based on what we find, because remember, we don't just analyze the data, we take action on the data, even if that means changing course. So, in this process over the summer and the fall, right now, what you know as a strategic plan has five different components that are focused on instructional core, maintaining and attracting a diverse, highly qualified educators, innovative programming, inclusion and belonging, and shared accountability. And what we found in this first year of work was kind of like, when you look at some of those, I'm just going to use Thanksgiving as, it's kind of hard to have the turkey without the dressing, right? And so, that's where we found ourselves, when you're talking about instructional core, it's hard not to talk about inclusion and belonging, and so thinking about how do we combine those in a way that we get to enjoy and see the fruit of our labor? So, that's what you're going to see in the future down the road, that we're going to shift from five to integrating those five into three, so that it really makes sense. Does anybody have any clarifying questions?
Member Gaetle?
Yes, Member Gaetle.
You're shifting to three, what are the three?
Well, it's not necessarily three, again, so, let's take for instance, shared accountability. Shared accountability is that Dr. Shorter doesn't just own the data, we all own the data. The data and assessment accountability team doesn't just own the data, so does the cell team, so does the innovation team, and so thinking about, if shared, if the data sits in shared accountability, and innovation is in a domain by itself of like trying to measure those separately when it really should be measured together, so that's why I mean by combining them into one. Innovation also includes the instructional core of like how are we innovating in the science classrooms, right? And so, by keeping them separate, it's hard to measure them effectively. And then also, as we work as a district and being more cohesive and coherent, it really does help us work better together as teams.
Any other questions? Yep, Member Castellanos.
Could I just have a, a updated copy of the district, the, the, the district strategic plan emailed to me?
Absolutely.
The most updated, so I could just take a look at it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right.
I'll send that to Mary Jules, and she'll make sure that you get it. Okay? Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for the presentation, thank you.
Thank you.
So, Dugan, did you want to, yeah?
Uh, yeah, so, if I could make a motion to amend the agenda, to have Section A under Communications and Information, move to our next item.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
Post, nice have it, all right. This is the maximum age letter from attorney.
Correct.
At the very back of your packet.
It's at the very end, yeah.
So, I'm happy to speak to the.
Want to move all communications or just?
I was thinking just this, if, if that's all right with the rest of the committee? Thank you, Mary.
So, thank you once again for the record, Lynn Public Schools Compliance Officer Charlie Gallo, and just here to speak a bit to the policy and law aspects of the maximum age policy and letter that you got. So, I'll just kind of take you through where we've been, where we're at, and where it is recommended that we go. The Lynn Public Schools maximum age for admission and attendance policy is just that, it sets maximum ages for admission and for attendance, it is at file J E B A. There is a statute on the special education side, a law which is Chapter seventy-one B, Section One, which defines for special education purposes, a school-aged child as someone aged three through twenty-one who has not earned a high school diploma. The legislature has never defined school-aged child for a general education student, however, in the nineties, the legislature passed general laws, Chapter sixty-nine, Section One B, and what the legislature did was directed Bessie, the, the state school committee essentially, to set a maximum age of attendance. Bessie has never done that. So, in the absence of Bessie ever doing that, districts set their own. In two thousand nineteen is the first that I know of here in Lynn. That policy set a max admission age, not attendance age, but admission age, and the age was twenty. There were gaps, it only spoke to attend, to admission, it didn't speak to attendance, and so because there was no max attendance age, that means hypothetically, you could enroll at twenty-five. I don't know if anybody tried to ever use that loophole, but it existed at least, and if there's a max age of twenty-one on the special education side, how can there not be on the gen ed side? Also because of how that twenty nineteen policy was drafted, there was a loophole where someone who had a diploma or equivalent of diploma could also enroll. That was prior to the time of any of us here, including myself. In two thousand twenty-two, we fixed those things with a policy that set max admission and attendance age at twenty. Twenty was at the higher end of districts that we looked at at that time, we did not look at data outcomes at that time, we just looked to other districts and kind of aired on the higher end of what we saw. Fast forward to two thousand twenty-four, we dropped the age, max attendance age for gen, gen ed is nineteen, max admission age was eighteen or turning eighteen that school year, and we based that in data. So, at April twenty twenty-four, Dr. Shorter, who you just heard from, presented with me and with others, and we told you that there was a, for the years twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-three, there was a ninety percent plus graduation rate if the student enrolled in LPS at age five, eighty-one percent at age thirteen, forty-eight percent at age fifteen, and if you enrolled beyond age sixteen, your likelihood of graduating was in the twenties to thirties. Later on that year, in two thousand twenty-four, so after that policy was adopted, there was state guidance, not law, but guidance governing newcomer students, and buried in that guidance was a provision that said that they, the state felt that the age should be twenty-one for both general and special education students, guidance. In May of two thousand twenty-five, fast forward a little bit further, you received a letter from advocates who said two things, they said, first, we think Bessie should set the age, and we said, second, if Bessie doesn't set the age, we think Lynn should take a look at its policy and perhaps increase the age. On, I believe it was June seventeenth, you received an attorney, a letter from attorney Katie Meinault, Katie is the Special Education and Student Discipline Attorney in the district, and she recommended that you have two options, one is to currently now align your policy to the state guidance, the other is to wait and see what Bessie or Desi does, but her recommendation was the former, that you start working on aligning the policy to the guidance, and so we're prepared to undertake that work. That is sort of the policy and law aspect of it, I'm happy to take any questions if there are any. I also want to defer certainly to the superintendent if there's anything that I left out on that.
No, I think that's pretty thorough, I just want to also acknowledge that in the letter that Katie shared, we went through a very discreet screening process for students that came to the Welcome Center and were eighteen at the, at the time of requesting enrollment, and she also shared numbers that we kept throughout the year in terms of two hundred and three students that applied for admission, that were eighteen plus, seventy-four were admitted following admissions process, and that was sort of a thorough review of transcripts verifying, Charlie's team verifying that they had not graduated in another country. We've, over the last two years, we've been communicating with the Ministry of Education and other, the countries that our, our students are arriving from, and then also, so forty-seven of those chose not to enroll, and eighty-two were not approved, some of them mostly because in many of the countries from where our residents in the community are, at sixteen, they've obtained a high school diploma, and so, enrolling in high school, again, is not the objective, right, of this, of, of our educational policy. So, I think that sort of covers what, what Katie was, you know, wanted to convey in this letter, as well as some considerations for how we would continue to place students, and, you know, how would, how we would proceed in terms of supporting them to meet their educational goals, because as Charlie just shared, when we looked at the data on graduation rates, students that were eighteen plus were graduating, some were in the percentage of, it was like twenty-seven percent, which means they're not successful, right, because they're not making it through the four years of high school, and generally, that's because at eighteen, you know, you need, you need to work, sometimes you have a family, I mean, there's so many things to take into consideration. So, we're really looking at which programs do we currently have that can provide students with flexibility when they're eighteen? We have a facto program, which is now called the Har, Har. Dergan Success Academy, thank you, Member Reed. So, we're, you know, we're excited to look at opportunities to expand seats there, as well as looking at our LEAP program in the evenings, so that students can work during the day, and also, our After Dark program has been well-resourced and staffed, but under-enrolled over the last two, three years. Generally, it starts out with strong enrollment, and then our students end up not completing programs, so we would like to find ways to enroll more students there, and also to try to retain them through accelerating their, their credits to be able to graduate sooner. So, those are, those are some of the recommendations and how we would manage that as a district to be able to place the students, because as we know, our tradition, right, our traditional programs like English and classical don't have seats, and there's another consideration that I don't believe that Katie shared in here, but we did discuss this during our meeting when we, she was going to draft this letter, and that is, in the past, there were students that were eighteen plus that were at English and classical, and they might be sitting in the same class, if they were taking algebra, they would be sitting in the same class with potentially a fourteen or a fifteen-year-old. And actually, Desi says that we're not supposed to do that, that we're supposed to create separate sections, which would further restrict and require more space, physical space, to be able to schedule those courses. So, we're, in the meantime, while we figure out, right, some of the, you know, the possibilities of a potential expansion in any other program, the three programs we're going to continue to place students in would be those three.
Member Dugan, Member Reed.
Those all sound like really viable options, I guess my, my question is, though, are you recommending we keep the policy as is and not adjust it?
No, we're recommending the change.
Change, okay.
And instead of screening all this, well, we would continue to screen for students that have graduated, clearly, right?
Right.
We would never, we were, we're not going to accept students that have a diploma from another country.
Okay.
We, you know, if they're looking for language skills, acquisition, you know, validation of their high school diploma in some other way, we could gear them towards programs that have like HISA, right? Other than that, students that would be enrolled, we would need the change in policy to continue to accept.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Member Reed.
Well, thank you, Dr. Albert, actually, it answers a lot of my questions that I had, Attorney Gallo, I'm just trying to understand this, it's confusing, go over the policy.
Go ahead.
The first time. So, the Desi guidance is that students can enroll until their twenty-first, so if they, say they enrolled as, I guess, a tenth grader, twenty-one-year-old, for example, they'd be able to finish school until then?
No, so there's still, their, their guidance is around age of attendance, not admission age.
Gotcha.
And, and so, so we, it would be great to have something sort of more clear.
That's what I was, yeah.
But we don't, and, and so that being the case, you have this weird hypothetical, and this would exist for a special education student, that, that they could enroll if they didn't already have a diploma the day before their twenty-first birthday, and then they would get a very strange letter the day before that said, you know, you're.
Right, right. Your age. I think that guidance is, yeah. A little tricky, and so.
Yeah.
And then, Dr. Albert, thank you answering my other question I had, but it was around sort of one that the Desi guidance, I knew there was some around different sort of age ranges and everything like that, but my other question is, I, I agree with a lot of the, you know, programming suggestions and recommendations, is there any specific sort of guidance when it comes to age on what it means to be enrolled in, I guess, a public school, if that makes sense? Like, do all these programs qualify, can we have something more sort of innovative or robust, so that these students are really getting best served? I mean, I think our current programming is largely capable of that, but I'm just trying to think sort of all the options here on, on, on the table.
I mean, I think, I, the answer is yes, and I think that the opportunity for that would be through, like, After Dark.
Right.
Where students would develop a specific skill set that would put them right into the workplace upon graduation, which is what we would want.
Sure.
Right? But it, an expansion of After Dark is also going to be very expensive, because it's, it's currently a well-resourced program, it has to be, it requires, you know, materials that are expensive, staff, in addition to our daytime staff, and an expansion, you know, a significant expansion of students would require us to dedicate resources towards that.
Sorry, a couple, a couple more questions. Attorney Gallo, I know we've talked about this and others over the, you know, several last several months, would, sort of looking at a more robust policy in terms of how we handle credits from foreign countries, or, you know, sort of other places, help this, alleviate this at all, or is we still sort of being in the same boat?
I think we'll be in better shape, and, and you all have done that through the graduation policy.
That's right.
Which was, I think, IKF, where, where no longer, and Deputy Cohen, I know we've been before you a lot, but Deputy Cohen and I were before you on this a little while back, and the idea is that rather than drop a student into the ninth grade, because we have to get X number of credits per year, the policy as it now reads aligns with Mass Core and talks about overall credits, and so that could be other options for creative learning that allows, you know, more credits dur, and you could start further on or move further quicker, so we have a more flexible policy in that regard, so I think we'll be better positioned now than we were when you did this. That being said, and Dr. Albert, I shared some of the numbers, you know, this policy has provided an opportunity to, to sort of counsel with prospective students, applicants, about what other options may exist in the community, and indeed, twenty-three percent when learning about those chose them, and then of those who, who were still wanting to attend and, and were then approved to attend, I will note, eight percent this year dropped out in year one, eleven percent are chronically absent.
Of, of the?
Ones who were, who were, who.
Enrolled.
Were enrolled in.
Correct. So, when we take that review process, we do need to be thinking about impact, certainly.
Thank you, and then just, sorry, last question, could we get the numbers resent to us of what the data was at the time, of how many people would, would, would have fallen out because of this? I'm just trying to get a sense or remember how.
Yeah, we, we had a projection, yeah, 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 we can, we can reshare the projection, absolutely.
I, and I have those handy for, for right now, for twenty twenty-five, if, if you want them.
That'd be great.
So, there, there are, there are, so if we're looking at age eighteen, there are two hundred and eighty-six students who will be eighteen, between eighteen and nineteen on September first, there are one hundred and eleven that will be nineteen, there are thirty-eight that will be twenty, there will be three that will be twenty-one.
Thank you.
Great, so the, the letter concludes with a recommendation and says that, you know, she's available to assist with drafts, provide language, collaborate with districts, and manage transition effectively, that's currently happening, right?
So, we wanted to take the temperature tonight, and, and I think it sounds like we have that, and, and so we'll come before the policy sub with a proposed redraft, if, if that makes sense, unless there's another.
No, I think that, I think that makes sense, yeah, that was my understanding, that's, that's going to be moving forward.
Yes, yes, and the, the one last thing that I want to share that we're exploring is, you know, with the data team looking in. with the data team looking into how we can create an adult program, be, it, it could potentially be part of, right, like what LEAP is currently and After Dark. The difference would be that we would be disconnecting, right, those students from English and Classical for accountability purposes, so that if and when those numbers that Charlie just shared, that begin to decline very quickly in terms of attendance, in terms of graduation rate, it doesn't impact the entire school, which it's currently doing, it's been doing for years. So, doing it that way seems to, you know, I, I think would, would make a lot of sense.
Just trying to get that.
Yeah, yeah. We want to create, we're already funding it, because there is no funding for adult, right, education programs. We're going to look for grants to, you know, be able to do, like, at least partial, right, funding for, for what we want to do. But certainly, making sure that we separate the accountability process will support, right, our district mission of student achievement.
Yeah, I, thank you for that, and thank you, Attorney Gallo. I appreciate Attorney Minow putting this together. You know, this is, as, as Attorney Gallo mentioned, this has been a conversation we've been having over the course of several years, and, and really brought to a fore by some changing demographics of the, of the district. And, and I think this demographic in particular, the, the more advanced age, young people presents a, a, a real challenge, because from the, our community's perspective, we absolutely want these folks to get what they need and what they're seeking, which is an, an education and support and so on and so forth. And I think the, the question is, as a community, like, what's the best way to do that? And I think sometimes it's going to be working with our partners at Pathways, North Shore Community College, or Catholic Charities, you know, the, the HISA and the ESOL and, and whatever it is. But for, but for where LPS is the right fit, we, we, we want to enable them to succeed, no matter what the odds are. And I think one of the advantages of being a large district, and, and one that has been, I think, a leader, a leader in addressing changing needs from a, for rapidly changing student body, is that we have these options, right? We have LEAP, we have After Dark, we have the Dergan Academy, and to the extent that we are able to, to fine-tune those programs to help these folks be successful, it's, it's great for those students and their families, it's great for our community, because they're, 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 these are our residents now, these are our, these are our constituencies, they're our, our neighbors, and I think it's something we, we can be really proud of. After Dark is an amazing program, and except that we have capacity in that that we can utilize, that's a win for everybody. Because as that program gains momentum and creates more scale, it'll just open other opportunities for folks that want that technical education for, for whatever reason. And we know that there's, there's a lot of them, and, and there's some gap there in terms of what, where the student interest and follow-through, but as we continue to, to figure that out and fine-tune that, I think that offers a lot of potential, and doing it all with, you know, language access front and center, obviously, that's, that's, that's a critical issue here in the, in the cultural competency to be able to figure out what happened in the home country and so on and so forth. It, it, it's a sort of learning process for the, for the district as we figure out how to, how to set this up, but obviously, a really important one, and I know one that we're, that we're all really committed to. So, so thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just say before Charlie leaves?
Yeah.
As Charlie's direct supervisor, I want to thank him. Lynn Public Schools was brilliant in choosing him. He truly has done an amazing job. He's exceptional at his role, and I thank you for everything you've done.
As your indirect supervisor, I have to say that I, words can't ring truer than that.
That's far too kind. I appreciate it hugely for all of the support from everybody, and, and both indirect and direct, and Deb, I will miss you as my direct, and thank you so much for the kind words.
Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Gallo. Not necessary, thank you.
Quick recess.
Great.
You want a recess? Yep, sure. We'll take a recess.
The actual changes that happened. So, when you look at the list on page four, Aborn, who used to have Marshall and Pickering as feeder, only would go to Pickering. Brickett stayed the same, Callahan stayed the same. Cobbitt, Breed no longer is a feeder. It's only Marshall and Pickering. Connery stayed the same, Drewett stayed the same. Ford was Marshall and Pickering. They will only be Pickering now. Harrington remains Marshall. Hood, which was Marshall and Pickering, will only be Pickering. Ingalls picks up Pickering. So, they were only Marshall. Now, they will, there'll be a combination. Lincoln stays with Breed. Lynn Wood stays with Pickering. Sewell Anderson, which had Breed and Pickering, now will only be Breed. Shoemaker stayed the same with Pickering. Sisson stayed the same with Pickering. Tracy added Pickering. They were just Breed. Now, there'll be a combination. And Washington stayed the same with Breed and Marshall. And then, the slide five just reminds you of the percentage of enrollment at each school currently and what it would shift to should, once we open up the new Pickering. So, currently Breed has forty percent of the enrollment with thirteen fifty-nine. Pickering only had eighteen percent with six twenty-seven. Marshall, and this was as of March, I believe. Marshall has forty-two percent at fourteen fifty-four. With the proposed district boundaries, Breed would then drop to thirty-five percent, enrolling twelve oh eight. Pickering would increase to thirty-three percent to have eleven hundred forty-nine students. And Marshall would drop to thirty-one percent to be a thousand eighty-three students. The next page, slide six, just gives you the process we took. And you see, there's a strike through of June twelfth for this presentation because we moved it to this meeting. And then, the next slide on slide seven. We did do the public comment, which ran for the entire month of April, from April first to April thirtieth. We did hold a public forum at Pickering on April thirtieth in the gym at five thirty. We did have some people, some families and neighbors that showed up. There was not a lot of public comment directly to redistricting. There was more about the project itself. Their question that does relate to this was about the traffic on Conomo Ave. And I shared with them that the entrance will be different for Sisson versus Pickering and that that should alleviate that. What you see here on slide seven, we received a total of ten comments in the survey for the public comment. Two of the comments were speaking to Sewell Anderson being changed to just Breed Middle School and not having access to Pickering and being a little disappointed with that. Three comments spoke to a concern about adding more students to Pickering and feeling that there would be too many students and cause overcrowding at Pickering. Two spoke to a concern of the added traffic. One commented about the students at one hundred Bennett Street. I think that parent might not have understood what the public comment was and was questioning if they would be moving to Pickering, which we know would not be the case because it's preschool. And two who shared that they were in favor of the plan. So, based on the public forum, the public survey for public comment, and the number of comments we got, our recommendation is to vote to approve the redistricting strategy to balance student enrollment across all three middle schools as planned.
So moved, so moved.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Member Reed.
So, deputy, just to clarify, so nothing has changed, right, since the last time we saw this presentation?
Correct.
Okay. And just to clarify, I'm obviously going to go over all these, but the comments, they got the most comments about feeling that Pickering would be too overcrowded. Obviously, enrollment is like probably close to doubling, but the-
But the building is, right, exactly. The capacity, the building is going up.
I mean, it could be scary on paper, but I think the whole point is to balance it out, so.
Exactly.
Number Reed had a question. So, how would the, how Ingalls has become, where they can partially, they could do Marshall and Pickering? How would that be turned?
It's based on where the streets are. So, the street directory would be adjusted, which has already been done. It just hasn't been fully released because we need approval. And there will, there is a plan before Pickering opens to actually have on the Lynn Public Schools website, the ability for a parent to go in to like a link where they could put their address in and it will spit out what their school would be.
Yeah, because I mean, obviously, everyone wants to try to send their kid to the new school, but.
And there still is the waiver process, but that process, you know, they have to formally ask to be put on a waiver and then it goes through an approval process in the summer. But with the Pickering project, I mean, we know we're trying to balance out the enrollment of our middle schools across the city. Marshall and Breed have been way over-enrolled for a lot of years. And it puts a lot of stress on the building, on the staff. This Pickering Middle School is going to make such a difference for everyone that everyone will get a good edu-, not that they're not getting a good education, but when you're in a building, you go to Breed and walk through the hallways in between classes, I'm sure you've all seen it. It's a lot, and this will alleviate that a lot.
Yep.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Member Reed? Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Next, we have the mid-cycle review of the superintendent's evaluation. We talked about this briefly last meeting, that we wanted to give folks a time to dive into this. And this is a sort of a informal check-in, not necessarily built into the process, but an opportunity to keep it top of mind and so.
Thank you, Mayor. So, there are more slides in your documents than there are up here. I kept it, I've hidden some of those slides because we'll go over them in October. So, they're already there. But in October, there'll be links to all the evidence submitted way in advance for you to have an opportunity to look at it and also ask questions before our meeting. So, I want to just ground the process and system-level thinking here in terms of where the district strategic plan is what we all created as a school community. And out of there, we pull superintendent evaluation goals with the data team, right, based on identified gaps. And then, those drive school improvement goals, which all of our schools create a school improvement plan. And we look at all the data, disaggregate it for them, and we look at what are the increments of growth each year. And the process over the last two years, instead of having them rewrite plans each year, has really been thoughtful in terms of thinking that we should front-load goals and create increments, right, every year to meet, to actually meet the goals. And so, that's what we've been doing at schools. And then, those drive our principal and administrator evaluation goals, which then drive, right, the conversations when teachers are putting together their goals and thinking through like, what is the professional development, for instance, that a teacher would need to be able to? And then, so when you look up and you go, you know, you look down, we should all have connectedness in the goals. So, this was the first area that was selected in terms of the standards. It was indicator one A, which is curriculum. And this is just the overall, like, and it specifically states, demonstrates exemplary leadership in ensuring that all students have access to a rigorous standards-based curriculum and programming. One of the pieces of evidence, it really comes from the student growth indicators and progress from the state from twenty-four to twenty-five. We did experience a hundred and seventy-five percent increase in student growth and achievement. And so, the link in the PowerPoint would take you straight to the chart. And what it indicates in the, in the orange that we moved, that's what helped us to move from fifth to seventh, right? And we, if we kept the momentum the way it is, potentially in one year to two, reasonably, we would be able to move out of the bottom ten percent, right? Which is what our immediate, like, that's our short-term goal. And then, like, what does our long-term planning look like? When we look at instructional leadership and instruction, this was indicator one B, was the second area that you selected. And thinking about instructional practices in all settings grounded in evidence-based practice. Everything we do is grounded in evidence-based practice, from our curriculum to our pedagogy to high-yield strategies and methods that we support teachers with. And so, designed to engage all students and differentiated to meet individual learning needs. We've nearly tripled the district's student growth percentile ranking statewide between twenty-four and twenty-five, and that's just one year, right? So, we're, our goal was to really look at the district's learning loss between what was post-pandemic as well as what students were experiencing as learning loss individually. Because we know that many of our students were one to two grade levels below where they currently were sitting. So, that compounded, right, makes it even more difficult for our principals and teachers to actually attack this problem. The reduced, we reduced the number of schools requiring assistance from fourteen to eleven and twenty-four, and we're waiting to see when we look at the data in October, which we'll come back and do like the final presentation for the actual evaluation on what does that look like. But we've seen basically in the data that is currently embargoed, which means, I can't share it with you all, but we've looked at it preliminarily. We've seen a lot of growth in a lot of the schools. And some have, some just are demonstrating unbelievable growth. So, we're very excited about the, cleaning up the data for October and being able to share that with you at that point. We also implemented year two of project-based learning across schools to promote student-centered, inquiry-driven, and real-world learning. And we will be moving that into the elementary schools in the fall, right? Because we started at the secondary level and now, we're really thinking about how to approach that at our elementary school sites. Strengthen data literacy among educators. Not only have we been using Open Architects, but we've had a data visualization tool. We implemented Tableau and we gave all teachers and including you as school committee members access to a data dashboard, which we did not have two years ago. We've also, all of our principals are trained in DataWise and our executive leadership team, that is what we use to support the process and the cycle of continuous improvement, looking at what our students are achieving. We also empowered multilingual learners to achieve K-12 literacy proficiency, equipping them with language skills and knowledge needed to actively engage in daily life and succeed in diverse educational life pursuits. We're currently looking at the correlation between our access scores and some of our other programs, Flashlight three sixty, Rosetta Stone, and comparing at the language acquisition. In some schools, we know it's evident, I'll just give a shout-out to Carrie Nakosha, one of our rookie principals at Tracy. Her student scores for WIDA access are just unbelievable. When I say unbelievable, some of the highest in the district. And she religiously uses Rosetta Stone with the students. And the students are out of the program. They're speaking English, they're accessing content. And she's just, you know, an exemplary principal doing a phenomenal job with the, with the population at the school. But this is just a collective overview. So, our goal was by June of this year, the percentage of students making progress towards language proficiency would increase from thirty-two percent to thirty-four point seven percent. And of course, our actual, our actual percentage was forty-one, which means we blew way past the goal, which is exciting, at eight point nine percent.
I just have to give a round of applause.
Oh, yeah.
That is, you know, for our, our principals and our teachers, you know, and our students have worked so hard for this and we're really starting to see the trajectory upward, so.
Amazing.
Standard two is management and operations. Indicator two A was about the environment. And it was really about executing effective plans, procedures, routines, operational systems to address a full range of safety, health, emotional, and social needs. And really, when we, when we looked at, you know, all of our systemic structure, like, we look at our structures and our systemic plans. We have done over the last two years, I think the team has done an incredible amount of work around revising systems, putting things in place that did, that were not actually written down anywhere and really focusing on aligning the procedures across all schools. And that was really important to make sure that we have continued increases. And one of those things, obviously, we know that the, that the, that that impacts is, and it was, our goal on the second slide, but I'll go back, was to really reduce disparities in IEP language and document support, parent involvement for students with disabilities by implementing inclusive and supportive strategies, but also to have compliance where it really needed to be. And in twenty-two, twenty-three, which was our baseline number, it was sixty-seven percent. And in twenty-three, twenty-four, we were a little bit higher at ninety-three percent. And our measurable goal was really to always target minimally eighty-five based on our student population. But overall, our change has been between twenty percent and twenty-six percent over the last two years of increase in compliance. And so, that is really a testament to a change in a lot of procedures and policies in making sure that we're communicating effectively with families and that we're educating them on the goals and that we're also keeping the proper documentation as required by the law.
This is a big round of applause. We're struggling with IEPs and struggling. It just impresses me. Dr. Kalala, I'm sorry for just saying it, but thank you.
So, the entire sped team and all of our teachers that support our students with disabilities and, you know, there are, there are lots of educators that are involved on an IEP team. So, it really is a collective effort, but it's really focusing on like having the same process in all schools, which is what matters, right? And then, just a couple of other points on this slide, which were, and, you know, I had a conversation with Mayor Nicholson about this one day and I said, you know, we've talked about a number of points on the evaluation over the months because we do, you know, just informal check-ins about what, how, we, we meet every other week. And when we talked about this, I said, you know, one of the things that I'm not really measured on, but has been a huge focus of what we've done for two years, has been looking at, you know, what are our district-owned facilities to reduce overcrowding and eliminate the reliance of these spaces? And we were able to do that with your support and the city council's support by Eastern Bank, you know, doing the Bennett Street moves. And of course, everyone that, you know, contributed and participated to making sure that we were able to make that programming happening. And of course, Deb, thank you. We'll never be able to thank you enough for overseeing the facility's operation and making sure that, I don't know how many times we've moved, but Deb has always been, more to come, the force, the force behind the moves. We've also done, as you know, with Charlie's, all of Charlie's meetings and under Member Dugan, substantive policy revisions of several existing policies that support school environments as well as revisions of administrative procedures that impact systemic operations. We've started with safety and every, we continue to do that on an ongoing basis to make sure that principals are able to support teachers and students in the environments each month. We also realigned central office leadership to meet needs of students and staff. Standard two was management and operations, human resource management and development. This one was implements a cohesive and comprehensive system for hiring, induction, and development to improve staff effectiveness and student learning with a focus on equity and diversity. Over the last two years, we've increased the percentage of racially and linguistic diverse background hires through targeted recruitment strategies by three percent. That is not a small percentage, given the applicant pool and making sure that we're, we've been targeting and recruiting differently. For the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, there were two hundred and thirty-four teachers that were hired. Forty-seven were diverse applicants. That's the highest number we've had, I think, in three, in the last three school years. As of June ninth, the district has one thousand five hundred and ninety-eight teachers and the total percentage of diverse teachers is two point one four percent. And though it looks like a small number, it is a one point two eight, to, one point two eight increase from the September data, while our staff attrition remains at zero point one zero percent. So, we are retaining staff, which is extremely important. We also successfully negotiated, we have our new L T U president with us, Phil O'Connor. We successfully negotiated a contract with L T U and it was ratified at our last meeting with numerous hiring incentive and retention strategies, right? We really focused on some of those things that would really want teachers to come and work at the district and also stay here. And we participated, and this is some of the things, these are some of the things that H R did differently. We did recruitment and outreach events hosted by not just here, like locally, Lynn Side Out, downtown Lynn Cultural District, but also, we joined Massachusetts Partnership for Diversity in Education. We did their career fair. We did the Amundo Latino Career Expo, the Massachusetts Educational Recruiting Consortium, the Education Career Fair, and the North Shore Latino Business Association Job Fair to advance our commitment to a diverse and inclusive educator workforce. So, and we also have other things that are happening, like the educator pipeline for ARAs with Salem State University and, you know, other initiatives that will continue. I want to, I didn't want to make all the slides for this presentation. I just wanted to give an overview. For indicator two B, human resource management, which is continued, we did so some increased staff capacity to meet the needs of multilingual language learners, students with disabilities, and underserved populations. We did internships for DESI, content competencies for licensure. We also streamlined human resource practices for recruitment, onboarding, and professional development. DESI, Salem State University Targeted Assistance Programs. We provided access to MTEL vouchers and prep, induction supports, and we included monthly district support teams, licensure meetings, and E L R assistance. The data tells us that there are ninety-four, ninety-five attended licensure support meetings, twenty-one waivered educators. And we also focused on retention bonuses, the longevity incentives, and we utilized twenty-six thousand dollars in funds from the Teacher Diversity Grant for retention for thirteen to fourteen employees. So, we'll continue to work towards that. The second to last standard is standard three, family and community engagement. You selected family concerns. We've established a system where the deputies superintendent responds directly to high-priority family concerns by supporting principals with alacrity. We also provided a part-time district family engagement liaison to support parents and guide principals in building effective family partnerships. We're making sure that concerns are addressed efficiently and escalated when necessary while prompting, promoting respectful school-home relationships in multiple languages. And we provided monthly communications to families with updates, student celebrations, and district priorities. And lastly, under communications, across a variety of platforms and audiences, we issued monthly communication to families and staff with updates, student celebrations, and district priorities through Parents Square and email. That's ongoing. I know you heard Member Peña says he gets a lot of communication from Parents Square. I think that's true for, for parents in all of our schools, including the secondaries. We elevated student and teacher accomplishments and inclusive celebrations through a heightened and consistent social media presence. I think that's one of the things that we're all really proud of, of really celebrating our community on social media. It's daily, multiple times a day. And so, I think that we've all seen the difference of what that looks like and how proud everyone is. I particularly loved the month where we had signing for seniors and we had, you know, there were, we had specific stories about the, the journey that those seniors took and how they were, where they were going post-high school. We communicated, I contributed to monthly articles with the item to highlight school initiatives and successes so that it would reach the broader Lynn community. We did that monthly. Communicated consistently with L T U, the mayor, the state delegation, and other Lynn, other stakeholders while advocating against the expansion of KIP Academy. I know we started in September and it ended in February, and that felt like forever. We also maintained frequent and direct communication with the school committee through the secretary. Thank you, Mary Jewels, for always forwarding and sharing all of the communication that we have. And also encourage open communication with all members and we will continue to do that, to respond to questions diligently within a day at the latest for ongoing requests. And that is all I wanted to share this evening. Thank you.
Any questions? Yeah, Member Gaitley.
Of course, I have a question. On data dashboard?
Yes.
Is that still available with the video for instruction? The committee members, if they didn't get to use it, could use it? Because I remember going on, being taped and.
Yes.
I might have to review it.
Yes, and what we can also do is, we're putting together some guided videos for a number of things. We can do like also a generic one so that you don't have to watch the entire hour and a half with Member Gaitley, but you can quickly-
But you might want to.
And swiftly go through an orientation of the data dashboard. So, we can certainly put that together.
Thank you.
Any other questions? We're not, we're not, don't need to take any action tonight. I think, obviously, this is the middle of the cycle, so there's more cycle left. So, you know, if there's things that folks are looking to see in the next few months, I'm sure Dr. Albers would love to hear from folks. I also think it's, it's good for us to be thinking about it. As we've talked about in the fore, it's, it's a, it's a, a lot to accomplish in a year on this annual cycle. And I think in the fall, things go particularly quick because all of a sudden, the data is avail, like, public and then, we do the evaluation and at the same time, are setting the goals for the next year. And, and so, we can start thinking about now, feedback we're going to have, but also, what we want to see in the goals for the next year and be prepared to stay on that annual, annual cycle. All right. Next, were there any votes taken in the policy subcommittee?
Yes, so we had three motions that I'd like to take individually on three, excuse me, policies that we'll need to vote on. The first motion was to adopt the generative artificial intelligence policy, which will be a new one to our, to our manual.
Is there a second on that? Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Member Reed? Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Okay, the second policy that is before us here is policy E E and it's transportation services. And as outlined by Attorney Galloway, did make some minor changes to that policy, so we'll need to adopt that as a committee.
Second.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Member Reed? Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Okay, and finally, is policy J I C-
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Okay, and finally is policy J I C J, which is our student cellphone and other personal electronic devices. That was put forward to the whole committee.
Second?
Second.
Member Castellanos?
Before we do the roll call, we had a discussion here. Member Castellanos, Member Reed.
This was with the recommendation that we're going to seek parent insights, this forums, there's going to be communications, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Is that something that, does it need an amendment? I like to, I want language in there to make sure that happens?
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't-
In the motion, excuse me.
Yeah.
Not the policy.
Yeah, you're right. I don't know, Attorney Greenspan, if you have, whether we, whether that would be in the form of a motion or...
I apologize for the confusion.
Yeah, no problem, this one.
Yeah, I think it could be in the form of a motion.
Okay. So, so, why don't we do, we got a motion on the table, it's been made and seconded. Why don't we, why, do you want to make a, make a motion and then we can, Member Dugan can decide to, decide to accept it as a friendly amendment, and if not, we can vote on the amendment, so. So, what would be the...
A, a motion to hold a parent-public forum to discuss the policy change?
Yep.
And I'm more than willing to accept that as a friendly amendment.
All right, so then, the, the full motion is that it's approving the policy-
With the amendment.
-with the forum.
Second.
Further discussion? Member Reed.
I just, sorry, I was late rushing it from the State House. I, I've been talking to Member Dugan about this as a member of the subcommittee and as well as Attorney Gallo over the last few months. I know they worked really hard. I just want to express my, my strong support for this policy. I know at the end of the discussion, when I walked in, it was about sort of some of the stuff happening state level. I've been trying to be actively involved in that. I, I know it's not a clear-cut issue, and I know it's something that probably will have, that things have to be worked out, but you talk to, you know, any teacher and a lot of parents, and this is one of the, the biggest things that you hear. It's very hard to compete with the phone. There was an article that came out two weeks ago that called it liquid cocaine, and, and, you know, I think many of us, even some of us who grew up in the technological genere- generation have sort of addictions to these things. So, I know it's, you know, I know it's not the easiest thing to take up, but I, I think it's important for us to be ahead of the curve on this. And one last point I wanted to make is that, you know, it's, it's not just for education, but also it's, it's sort of our duty as, as a community. This is the only space we can really force kids to, to not have these phones. There's really so few spaces they have that opportunity to do so, and I think it's really and really important that a school setting is, is the place to, to do so. So, sorry, could have said that earlier if I was here, but just wanted to make my stance clear on this.
Thank you. Member Gailey.
And I'd like to add to that, Member Reed, because when you go out into real life and you're out working, like, we're not supposed to be on our cellphones. When you're doing a job, you're not supposed to be on your cellphones. You can have it in your pocketbook, you can have it on your desk, but you're not supposed to have it out in public. So, I just wanted to say that that's real life and that's actually training people for real life, in my opinion. Thank you.
Member Reed.
Yeah, and just to kind of add to it as well, the policy itself, i- it's not really changing too much from what we've already had.
Right.
It's just a matter of consistency, you know? We, we didn't have that, because our language is a little vague, and so that's, we're just kind of tightening all that up.
Absolutely.
So that, that, you know, the schools are consistent across the board. So, I think that's an important point to remember as well.
More, more to come on this, for sure.
Absolutely.
More will be revealed.
Absolutely.
Any other discussion? All right. Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Any votes in buildings and grounds?
Yes, there was a vote in buildings and grounds about the food project, the greenhouse at Ingalls. The only thing that was added was subject to the issuance of a building permit.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Do we want to move the superintendent's report up? Someone make that a, a motion?
Sure, make a motion to move the superintendent's report up to our next order of business.
Second.
All fair?
Aye.
Post? Nice habit, superintendent.
Thank you. I just wanted to address this, the last, closing remarks of this last meeting to all of our families. And as we're closing this school year, I want to celebrate the many students who have met their academic goals and are now advancing to the next grade level, or in the case of our recent graduates embarking on their next exciting chapter. Their resilience, commitment, and achievements have made us all proud. I also want to take an opportunity to reflect on this school year. This has been an unprecedented academic, of academic growth for Lynn Public Schools. Our preliminary data reflects the momentum we are seeing across buildings in the district. Our English language learners, of course, are making incredible progress. We shared the, the percentage almost meeting nine percent, and it's important to remember, and that's a nine percent increase, 41 percent overall, but it's important to remember that of our 17,400 students in the district, 8,146 students are identified as English language learners. So, we, we certainly, that increase reflects a collective commitment to making sure that they are making progress. And of course, that ties to our vision and portrait of a graduate and the district strategic plan. We have improved accountability, which of course is also a collective effort. Our district's MCAT student growth percentile ranked, improved significantly from 277 to 256 in the state. We moved from 12th to 33rd from the bottom, and this puts us on track to exit the bottom 10 percent in district, of districts in Massachusetts. So, I just want to thank all of our teachers, administrators, and students for an incredible job to make sure that this happened this year and that we continue, we're going to continue on this journey of making sure that we are out of this category. Special education compliance, of course, we shared a 20 percent increase this year, but in previous year, 26. That fluctuation really is just real, all about increased population, you know, it fluctuates because it just depends on how many, how many students may have enrolled and at the current time. So, as long as we maintain it in the very high 80s and 90s, we're definitely doing right by our students. And this is really a reflection of our commitment of inclusive practice, strong systems for documentation, family communication, and student support. I also want to point out that we are focused on equitable access to advanced coursework. We have expanded opportunities for students to engage in rigorous academic experiences, and PSAT participation, which was very low, starting in 2019, rose from 39.6 percent to 54.8 percent all in one year. And so, we're really looking at AP course enrollment increases, as well as dual enrollment increases, and college participate, early college participation, which is consistently climbing. And as part of this work, I just want to make sure that we're all aligned in the secondary course offerings, comparing those available to offerings in other urban settings to make our students competitive for college and careers. We did an extensive analysis that helped us identify gaps and opportunities to strengthen pathways for all students, and we're, we're committed to expanding access to rigorous coursework, not only for strategic academic improvement, but also as a matter of educational equity. We know that college cultures provide all students with opportunities to take advanced courses. And while we're proud of this progress, we understand that rigorous coursework can change lives. We also recognize, as noted by DESI, that reflected in our mass core alignment data, that we still have significant work ahead of us to ensure that all students access a full range of rigorous coursework necessary for college and career readiness. That remains a critical area of focus for this coming year. We expanded early childhood access. The new early childhood center on Bennett Street has created 292 new pre-K seats, supporting early literacy development and school readiness. And in the fall, two pre-K sites will merge at this location, improving the efficiency again and reducing reliance on leased locations. We're excited for the opening of City Arts and Sciences Academy, our new STEAM-focused school, that opens this fall with 300 students and room to grow in the following years. CASA is designed to prepare students for the demands of rapidly, of a rapidly changing world in the field of STEM. And as Dr. Shorter shared earlier, we went through the district strategic plan year one and the portrait of a graduate. I just want to share and congratulate everyone. We graduated the highest number of graduates in the last three years, which was 1,348 students. So, that is phenomenal, so thank you to everyone. Lastly, I just want to share, I remain inspired by the strength of our community. Lynn Public Schools is a place where we face challenges with courage and optimism, united by a shared goal, which is providing every student with a high-quality education. So, I hope everyone finds the time to rest. Member Dugan's been at the beach, apparently, without us already. And reconnect with our loved ones and recharge this summer. We look forward to welcoming everyone back in September, ready for another year of growth, opportunity, and progress. So, thank you. And I just want to close with one, you know, I'm sure Mayor Nicholson wants to share some thoughts too, but this is Deputy Rogero's last school committee meeting, and I want to thank her for the last two and a half years that we've spent a lot of time together, the support you gave me during transition time, and that you've given me personally and professionally over the last two and a half years. Your perspective, your experience, and your historical knowledge made an impact on me. So, thank you, Deb.
Yeah, I, I will certainly add to that. This is Deputy Superintendent Rogero's last school committee meeting. We, a few more weeks to make it to 40 years in the district, but, you know, unless something comes up over the summer, which I guess it could, so it's not...
Planning on staying.
All right, yeah. No, I mean for the school committee.
Oh.
Yeah, if we had to come back. But we are so grateful for your leadership and contribution over these last four decades, and I've had the honor of working with you throughout my, my time here on the school committee and, and as mayor, and, and worked particularly closely with you when, when you sat here in a moment of real need for the district, and you stepped in and, and delivered in a really meaningful way that was incredibly important to the entire city. And we're, we're always going to be grateful for that and for the impact you had on the students you taught, the, the schools you led, the, the vision that you helped create that is going to stay with this district for a very long time, and we, we really appreciate it.
I had something.
Sure.
And I can't thank you enough for taking over facilities. We got so much done.
That wasn't a choice.
But I know, I speak for my committee members, that when we met at the end of the month and we covered all the projects that we were covering in this district, it meant the world to me to be able to talk to someone finally about our buildings and grounds, and I hope that continues.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you to all of you. You know, at one point, I was a finalist for superintendent in PBD, and I remember that when I was going through that process, in my heart, my heart was aching because I didn't want to leave Lynn, but wanted to, I aspired to do more. I dodged a bullet, quite honestly, in that process and was not chosen, and got to stay in the city that I love, that I grew up in. My heart is here, it will always be here. I will be volunteering to read to children here. Thank you for, for having faith in me and in my abilities, and I've been very proud to serve Lynn Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Deb.
And I think, yeah. Barry has helped the, the school committee organize on behalf of the, the committee. A gift here, yeah.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I get to take my name plate too, don't I?
Yes.
Of course.
Leave the wood.
All right. We now need a vote to go into executive session.
So, move.
And you got to say what, we're going into executive session.
Oh, sorry. Make a motion to go into executive session to discuss bargaining relative to the Lynn administrative decisions.
Yep, and the executive session minutes from June 12.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Man is ready to go.